Mr. Caprosa.
Eric.
Commissioner Livermore.
Here.
Commissioner Middleton.
Here.
Commissioner O'Noe.
Yes, Commissioner Seaver.
Yeah.
But we just.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Some comments, people comments. Once, on this agenda, we have chance to get the agenda. It good.
Trevor.
That's me. Good afternoon. Nice to, nice to see you all. Um, my name is Trevor Cadlec and I'm with Community Corrections in Marquette County. Have any, any of you ever heard of Community Corrections before? This is all brand new.
Yep.
So a lot of times with Community Corrections, uh, the first kind of thing that, you know, always goes off in someone's mind usually is, uh, you know, work crews and things along that nature. Uh, it is not that anymore. It used to be, but it has actually since changed quite a bit. So Marquette County is actually the only Community Corrections presence in the Upper Peninsula. And, uh, right now I'm in office of two. You know, when I first, uh, started with Marquette County about a couple of years ago, you know, it's a, it's a grant funded, uh, really it's a grant funded entity through the state of Michigan. And this, uh, actually is technically through MDOC dollars. So the whole purpose of Community Corrections is targeting two populations, which is the pre-trial population and sentenced felons. And MDOC breaks off a chunk of fourteen million dollars of their budget and puts it in grant money. And where community, they're called CCABs, Community Corrections Advisory Boards can then apply for this money. Usually it's per county, however, there are some regionalized, uh, Community Corrections Advisory Boards, kind of in like the thumb area, you know, northern lower Michigan. Uh, but like I said, you know, Marquette County is the only Community Corrections presence, um, as it stands right now. And we're kind of in the process of actually regionalizing and, uh, in an effort to kind of try to start to reach these other counties, you know, in the Upper Peninsula. It's kind of been my passion project to try to spread, uh, the programs, which I'll get into in just a second. Um, to just, you know, all these other rural counties, cause it really is a program desert out there. Um, for a lot of, you know, smaller counties like Eldred County. And I live in Eldred County, so fun fact, so I have a vested interest in making sure that, you know, this is successful and, uh, I love the area. And, um, and really it's all about offering these programs and, you know, to having, uh, just more services to the public, you know, is really what it's all about. And, uh, kind of going through what Marquette County has right now for programs. Uh, I'm not sure if you guys have heard of any like pre-trial services, uh, anything of that nature. Uh, pretty much what pre-trial services is, is when a defendant is out on bond, a judge has, you know, they really have three different options. You know, they can either release them on PR, so personal recognizance bond, just releasing them, you know, and, uh, or they could obviously no PR, you know, keep them in jail. The third option, which is pre-trial services, is release on PR with pre-trial supervision. It's like a loose form of probation while a defendant is out on bond. And it's my job as a pre-trial services officer to make sure that they're following their bond conditions. And, you know, I'm kind of the eyes and the ears of the judge while they're out on bond. Now, uh, the other aspect of it is court appearance. So, uh, there's two things, it's court appearance and public safety. Those are the two focuses with pre-trial services. And, uh, so we have, you know, bi-weekly monthly appointments, just like a probation officer would with their, with their clients. You know, kind of going through, you know, see if they've had any, uh, you know, please contact if, you know, had any change of address, phone numbers, things along that nature. And really just for, we're kind of just a helpful hand, you know, helping them throughout the court process. Um, especially with, uh, they just get real, people get really confused, especially when they can't get a hold of their attorneys. Um, shocker, unfortunately that does happen, you know, attorneys are very busy. So we are kind of a nice reliable resource to where they can give us a call. Um, now I say a loose form of probation because, uh, they're, they're not required to come in person. So this is also something that can be done remotely, you know, from Marquette. And there's, there's not really a, you know, an employee needed in every single county in order to do this function. As it stands in Market County right now, um, you know, all of our appointments are by phone. The only time that, uh, we ever see a client in person usually is if they just come to say hi, which happens more frequently than you may think. Um, or if we're actually going to be utilizing electronic monitoring. That's the other com- like, uh, actually piece of pre-trial services that is huge. Um, electronic monitoring, this includes GPS tether. So, um, it also includes, uh, SCRAM, which is an alcohol tether bracelet that monitors, you know, their alcohol usage pretty much, uh, twenty-four seven. And it's actually, uh, I believe it's called transdermal to where, you know, they, they really actually reads the sweat and it, so it's twenty-four seven. It's not just like a daily PBT where you come in, you blow in a machine. It's constantly reading, um, for alcohol usage. And third is a sober link, which is a, uh, a remote, like a, it's a PBT that they can take home pretty much. And they have a testing window to which they have to blow into this machine. Uh, it's kind of like daily PBTs, uh, which Marquette does utilize as well. So, but that's electronic monitoring that kind of comes with pre-trial services. Uh, there is some eligibility criteria that you all kind of get into in a little bit that, you know, the judges and magistrates kind of have to follow in order to utilize pre-trial services and electronic monitoring. However, it is an essential tool. I mean, especially, uh, when you're talking pre-trial services, I call it the, the ladder of restrictions. At the top of the ladder is house arrest. It doesn't get much more of a restriction than that, than having to be confined to your home. The only way you can leave your home is for, you know, appointments, things on that nature, but you need, uh, court permission. Uh, known, you know, pre-trial services would be that court permission. And so pretty much, you know, we're in contact with these people multiple times in a week. So that's the top of the ladder and then you can kind of work your way down the ladder of restrictions, whether that be a GPS tether without house arrest. I mean, and then you can, uh, pretty much have that GPS tether as, you know, it just put exclusion zones. So if there's, you know, the alleged victim, you know, they have a work, they have a school, obviously their home, you can put these zones, um, that the defendant can't go into. And, uh, home confinement is the company that monitors everything, uh, and they do it twenty-four seven. So if a person, you know, were to go into an exclusion zone of an alleged victim, police would be notified immediately. The defendant would also, uh, be contacted saying to get out of that zone. And all, obviously also the victim, uh, the alleged victim as well, getting notified, getting that response ahead of time, just to warn them that, hey, you know, they breached that exclusion zone, you know, prepare or, you know, or something along that nature. So then now, as we start working down the ladder of restrictions, uh, you start getting into just normal pre-trial services, which is, quite frankly, usually, uh, just, uh, monthly appointments or bi-weekly appointments to where they just give us a call. It's almost like a court reminder. However, we can always work our way back up the ladder of restrictions and then we can also work our way back down the ladder of restrictions while people are on bond. If they've had bond violations, things all that nature. It just really gives judges and magistrates a lot more flexibility, um, and making sure that people are, you know, super properly supervised while they're out on supervision. So that's pretty much what pre-trial services is in a nutshell. It's the biggest program we have, however, it's not the only program that we have. Uh, the other essential piece, uh, right from the beginning is actually what's called the praxis. It's a pre-trial risk assessment. So when someone's booked into your jail, they will automatically get contacted by a company called Justice Point, who we subcontract with. They'll actually have an interview process with the, uh, defendant. Uh, and this will, and it's also, uh, they have a background investigation through what's called lean. And they go through this, uh, nine questions essentially. And, uh, these nine questions assess the risk level of the person. So at the end of all this, there'll be a report that's generated, issued to the judge and the magistrate, letting them know and giving them a recommendation of, you know, A, you know, should this person be released on PR, you know, they're low, low risk. You know, then you go B, which is the medium category to where, you know, hey, release them on PR, but with pre-trial supervision. And then C, this person's high risk. Um, the recommendation would be not to release this person out to the public. Or if you do, put them on pre-trial supervision and issue a tether. So, or like an electronic monitoring of some sort, just to ensure public safety. And, uh, so that's, uh, that's really the pre-trial assessment portion of it. You really need the pre-trial assessment in order to have pre-trial services and really everything else. It's the very much foundational, having that risk assessment. So every time someone gets booked in, there's another assessment that's get, that gets generated for each case. So, cause obviously the risk level can change, it can go up, it can go down, um, just depending on, uh, you know, just that person's history, the criminal history and how much they're offending and things along that nature. So that's the, that's kind of the second piece of the pie. The third, um, is what's called TRICAP, which is a treatment facility down in Saginaw, Michigan. Uh, it's actually been a godsend for us in Marquette. Uh, we had just a Great Lakes Recovery Center, which has been great. However, they're only a thirty day, um, you know, inpatient, uh, facility. And, uh, you know, thirty days is great, uh, however, it's, it's, it doesn't usually be, uh, you know, heavily heavy methamphetamine or opiates. Um, you know, but I'm sure we've all have family members or know of someone that has been affected by, um, these drugs. And their, the hold they have on these people is very severe and it takes time. So TRICAP, uh, is a facility, like I said, in Saginaw. This treatment facility goes up to a hundred and fifty days and they actually have, um, a, a specific program called the opiate methamphetamine specific program, OMSP. And it targets that, you know, opiates and methamphetamine, because, you know, it is the most severe, uh, to get off of those drugs. So it's like doubled amount of work, double amount of coursework, double amount of therapy sessions, things along that nature. Um, TRICAP, I would be the one try, uh, helping you guys with coordinating, uh, from your jail. So they have the, in order for a client to go to TRICAP, they have to be in your jail for ten days, just to ensure sobriety, uh, just cause detox can be really dangerous. So after those ten days are up, uh, I can coordinate with TRICAP, have them come to your jail, pick them up from your jail and they take them right to Saginaw, you know, for a hundred and fifty days, uh, if they're going through that program in particular. However, TRICAP does offer the other services other than just that, that top tier program. And, uh, so TRICAP, just a little history on them, they're actually funded through the same money that we are. There's, they're funded through MDOC dollars. They're actually a community corrections organization. So the only way you can utilize this treatment facility is by having a community corrections. Um, so like for instance, when we send someone down there, we go back to the praxis and we have to have that praxis risk assessment in order to go down there. So there's a, like I said, that we kind of, all these programs kind of work together a little bit. And, uh, that we've had some tremendous success with TRICAP. We've been, uh, we're going into our second year of sending people down here in Marquette. And, uh, we've had a lot of people, you know, been a revolving door and I'm sure you've seen it here, the same names kind of on the jail list, things on that nature. And it's been amazing to see some of the results, um, and their success rate is a, a pretty astronomical. But, uh, anyways, kind of going back to TRICAP, OMSP is their top tier program. It's a hundred and fifty days non-negotiable, however, they have what's called plus programming or standard programming. You can actually send someone down for obviously alcohol abuse, whippets, cocaine, uh, even domestic violence. They have like, uh, usually we reserve that for like, you know, low levels of DV first or DV second. Um, but it, they have actually really good, you know, rates of recidivism with domestic violence, which is hard to do. Uh, it's probably one of the toughest categories to actually have success in is domestic, domestic violence. Um, I think the biggest thing is taking someone out of their environment for a hundred and fifty days. Honestly is a big compartment, like, uh, compartment of that. And their team down there is very much devoted in treatment and helping people. Um, they're, uh, they're very excited, uh, about what they do and they, you know, any, anytime you guys ever want to go visit, just give me a call and I have no problem setting something up to where you can go see their facility, cause I've done it myself and they're very passionate about what they do and it shows. Um, and the biggest thing about TRICAP, so they have the, you know, what's called the plus programming, that actually doesn't cost us any money at all. That, that program in itself is completely free. Um, however, the only catch is that you gotta be, you know, have a community corrections in order to utilize that. The only program we technically pay for is the OMSP program, which is four thousand dollars per person. However, like I said, it's kind of the same money that kind of circulates, you know, it's kind of interesting, uh, you know, with grants and how they work and things along that nature. But technically that's the only program we pay for, but, uh, we have a, uh, Market County actually has a really good chunk of funding right now. And the reason why we want to regionalize is so we can keep increasing money to the Upper Peninsula. That's the biggest thing. You guys are our neighbors. Um, so we have, you know, I, I mean, and we're also utilizing your jail, so thank you for that. Um, so like we obviously have, uh, have issues that, um, and, and obviously, you know, it's, we're, we're not, you know, the only ones here in the UP. So it's actually beneficial for Marquette to help our other counties, uh, kind of get on board and to regionalize to, you know, to really bring these services to the UP. When I started a couple of years ago, we had about ninety thousand dollars to spend. Now we're up to three hundred and fifty thousand, um, and have seen tremendous growth, which is great. However, the catches with any grant money, if you guys are familiar, you know, you gotta make sure you're spending it. That's the biggest thing. And if you don't, then they're gonna find someone else that's gonna spend it. The state is a hundred percent on board with Marquette regionalizing and we would act as your fiduciary. So that kind of makes it easy on you guys to where you don't have to do any of the grant writing. It's all on me. The only thing we ask of you is, uh, is, you know, we need someone from your board of commissioners. And I believe also someone from your city council to join our board. You guys are your voice for your county. We want to make sure that you're heard, cause obviously every county has different problems. However, we all have, you know, similar issues, but, you know, we're all unique in that way.
How many people on your board?
Uh, as of right now, uh, I believe we have twelve.
Well, it wouldn't matter, you can have none of us on there, we still ain't gonna have a vote, so.
Well, you know, here's the thing, I mean, yeah, like I said, that's.
Twelve from Marquette or.
Yes.
Twelve, ten from Marquette, two from Eldred County, doesn't matter what else.
That's gonna change if they regionalize it.
Correct.
Marquette would shrink.
Correct.
And you would have.
We're really diluting ourselves eventually. Our goal is to eventually, um, is to be, you know, to have the whole Upper Peninsula kind of joined together. Cause the only way in order for, uh, community, unfortunately, how it, how it is, is that Market County is the biggest, right? You know, we are the biggest, we have the most population. There is a certain size criteria to where you, that's why there's no other counties as a community corrections as their own, cause they really can't support it. Um, that's why having Marquette County as a fiduciary is helpful, because we take that brunt from you guys. There's no staffing requirements, requirements needed on you guys. We grow from in like Marquette and including, you know, all the staffing and requirements needed. And, uh, pretty much you guys just kind of get the services, you know, and joining our team pretty much. That's the biggest thing for me. And, and it's been, honestly, it's been a challenge also, you know, this has been a, a work in progress for, for many time. And obviously every county is making sure that, you know, their, their needs are met, right? My, my goal personally is, you know, like I said, I live in Eldred County. I just want to do good, you know, that's point blank, simple. And it's, uh, and it's taken me a second to, you know, also convince people of Marquette that as well, like, you know, hey, what's in it for us? And I've said the same thing to where, you know, we're helping our neighbors, that helps us. And ultimately, you know, it brings more money to the UP, you know? We've never been as funded as we are right now. Um, and the reason for that is because they know our goal of regionalizing. And if we continue that process, we'll continue to bring more money to the UP, including more services to the UP as well. Um, so yeah, I, that, those are the three main programs that we would want to be introducing to the new counties. Um, you guys are actually, I've also had meetings with your, your sheriff already, your sheriff's department. And, uh, has, has been really constructive. And I know some of your judges as well have, you know, started to been talking about, you know, community corrections and things along that nature. Um, our goal is really targeting Eldred County and targeting Dickinson County. Um, I've had these similar meetings, uh, with Dickinson County as well, and they're very thrilled to kind of start the process. But, um, obviously, you know, the floor, floor is yours. If you have any questions at all, I welcome it right now. That'd be great.
I think a big thing was, uh, this needs to go not through us, this should go to the courts, the judges, stuff like that.
Hmm.
We have elected officials at these places, the judge, sheriff's department, they should be the ones making this decision if they want this, this, this is how we want to operate.
Sure.
So with that being said, we've had, uh, two, three meetings with the sheriff, undersheriff, um, probation parole, going shy eating. He's talked to a couple of judges, had magistrates sit down on some of the meetings. And everybody is very high on this program. The sheriff was gonna be here, he called me, I think about three, three thirty, said he wasn't able to make it. He had some personal family stuff that he's tending to. And he said that he's a hundred percent on board with this program. And if you guys have any questions, to give him a call anytime.
I was gonna say, this sounds like one of those, let's put us on Eldred County, things that the sheriff would love.
Yes. But the whole thing for Trevor coming was just to get you guys aware and up to date, up to speed. Because the sheriff was like, I know everything, undersheriff knows everything, shines knows everything. We just want our board to be aware of what we're looking at doing, even though it's more or less on the department and the court side of things. One of you guys would be involved with being on one of the committees or whatever. So we just wanted you guys to be aware and if you had any questions.
So would you have a representative in municing for that then too?
So are you talking about like an actual employee, a municing? No, it would all be in Marquette. And that's the biggest thing is that the state really is pushing to have everything in Marquette. It's actually, believe it or not, that's, that was actually not my plan at all. I was actually planning on, uh, having, you know, per region essentially, but they want everything to happen to run through Marquette, just because Marquette has, uh, we follow the rules, quite frankly, there's other Community Corrections Advisory Boards that do not. There's eligibility criteria that needs to be followed. Um, you know, we're, I'm pretty strict on that and making sure we're following those, cause if we don't, then our money goes away, you know? And, you know, I'm out of a job, um, that's quite frankly, but, uh, so that's why, you know, they've seen Marquette, you know, do well in that and following the rules. And, you know, uh, like I said, this, I, this is all really come from the state and trying to, you know, reach more rural areas and things along that nature. Um, to where we can have all kind of come together and work together. Uh, that's, that's the biggest thing.
I mean, if I, go ahead.
Do you have any literature on it?
Yeah, tons. Yeah, I got it all right here. Absolutely. And this is just the beginning conversation. Like I said, no decisions need to be made today.
No, but I like.
Yeah, yeah, no, and obviously you're, no, yeah, obviously we're, we're not there yet, but that's, that's totally okay.
You talk pretty fast like my wife.
Sorry, I, yeah, that's, that's good.
He sounds excited about.
Yeah, you know, you know, it takes me time though.
Process, yeah. And I just, like I said, I spilled, this is very much, um, you know, I, I don't know how, like with my board of commissioners, I have to almost kind of do like an elevator pitch every time I talk. So my apologies, but, uh, just cause the time constraints and things along that nature, but, but yeah, I actually have a bunch of literature if you don't mind. I'll just go in, uh, if you just want to take one, pass it down. And there's three different ones there. One's about TRICAP, uh, the other one is actually all the programs that Market County has. And the third one is actually that praxis risk assessment that kind of shows, uh, the questions that we ask and how to determine those risk levels and things along that nature.
So the only thing I, I mean, I'm breaking this down on paper and I'm loving everything I hear about it. But one of the things you said is there would be, is it, you said there'd be a four thousand dollars for that treatment?
Correct.
That's, that would come out of the jails or whatever.
Nope, it's, so here's the, the beautiful thing about this and why it's, it needs your cell to other counties is because it doesn't cost you a dime. Just to join this.
Well, just as I was thinking, we haven't made a decision on what we do with our opiate money. And I didn't know if that opiate money could be used towards this program, if there's any costs. Cause we had problems with.
That's one of my next questions.
Okay, that was one of the big things is.
Yeah.
You said they would come all the way up here and get them and take them to Saginaw. Transportation even to Great Lakes Recovery has been difficult, you know, cause of the rural communities. So I just didn't know, we haven't had a plan yet and we're still waiting on opiate money decisions. And we get that over time that we could put that towards this.
Yes.
Program if there was any cost to the county.
So, uh, yeah, and you, I'm glad you brought the opiate money, because that is a, uh, it's actually what Market County has, has utilized. We put, for instance, this year, we put twenty thousand dollars towards OMSP. That's just a local contribution. Um, if that's something I would recommend though, however, uh, we also use our opiate money for our drug testing fit, like, uh, operations. That's the biggest thing that helps us out. The reason why we're not trying to fill the jails up, we're not trying to put people back in jail. We're trying to flag them to see if they have issues. Um, and do you have a question?
For the, for these programs, they have to be tested. But the testing's not covered by the program.
Correct.
That's the only thing that's not covered.
Correct.
I was, I'm like, there has to be something that we can use.
So all the money would turn to hell for providing random testing to get people to help into the programs and to help monitor, to help.
And one of the biggest things, you know, when you're talking about the different pre-trial services. When there's no room in the jail and you have somebody who's been in here, you know, twenty times, they're not violent, they aren't hurting anybody, they just keep failing drug tests and all that. Those are the people that keep falling through the cracks, cause we don't have anything for them. They're coming in, they're over and over again, because one, we don't have room in jail for them to sit, to get clean enough. We don't have, they're just users that are coming back and over and over again, falling through. So something like pre-trial services that are like, hey, we know that this is a place we find you all the time doing these things. We're not gonna let you go there, that's on your exclusion.
Yeah, exclusion zones, it could be, yes.
Like. From my opinion, we're not talking, you know, who has any, or da, 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 just from a person in the community to have a program that is funded grant wise and doesn't cost us anything to really help.
What's that? The electronic monitoring, the drug monitoring, is that all part of the program or is that?
Yeah, so the, yeah, good question. The electronic monitoring is all apart, that's all paid for by Community Corrections Dollars. Um, that involves, that actually is going to include as well reconnect drug screening. So we'll actually pay for like the actual, I don't know if you've heard of reconnect, but it's pretty much random drug screening. The client will call in, it's like color calls and they'll say, yes, you have the drug screen today, no, you don't. The only thing Community Corrections doesn't cover is the drug screening operations, other than the sober link, the scram. However, you know, a drug screening is essential, it really is. And, and that's something I always, uh, really preach to counties, cause I feel like that's the biggest hole. A lot of counties are similar to where, actually you guys actually have, I believe actually have more drug screening than, uh, even Dickinson County. Dickinson County doesn't have any.
And so that would have to be done locally.
Locally, yes, and that's why.
Of course, we're trying to drive to Marquette for.
Right. Yeah, that just won't work, yeah, it just won't work. So the opiate, that's why the opiate settlement dollar, dollars is really beneficial. That's what we in Marquette County have utilized ours for. We actually have a committee, uh, for the opiate settlement dollars and we also have an advisor from the, from the grant itself.
Saying every person that gets lodged in or is booked, we have to send for a test, an air test?
So, no, no, not at all. It's up to the judges and magistrates decision, like discretion a hundred percent. The risk assessment's really a tool, you know, the judge at the end of the day can do whatever they want. Um, uh, however, it, it's, it's a really nice tool to have in front of them and to kind of understand, you know, like, you know, wh- what's the risk, right? How high of a risk is this person? Not only do judges look at this, but also attorneys, you know, and they could also argue to be like, hey, my client's low risk. You know, I think that they should go out, you know, they're eligible for a tether, just more information, uh.
For the risk assessment.
It's actually, it's technically not me in person, however, it's actually a company called Justice Point that is based out of Wisconsin that we contract with, that we pay for.
They know this person, doesn't know them at all.
No, the biggest thing is that.
You're definitely part of the booking process.
They're gonna be a part of the booking process, correct.
You're gonna actually fill the, the nine questions.
So the, so the deputies will talk to Justice Point initially. The biggest thing is that you don't want any, uh, like for instance, it's a small community, you know, I'm sure one of your booking officers may, may know the person they're booking in or something along that nature, right? It just happens. And the biggest thing, you don't want that to influence their, their, you know, their answers. Like one of those answers is, have you had a drug abuse history? That's a serious question to ask. Maybe they're too ashamed to admit that to their neighbor or whoever. Um, however, to, to talk to a random person over the phone, maybe they've never gotten caught before, that's a big thing to know. Um, and to, to go through that risk assessment with them. Uh, and like I said, these are real people, it's not just like an automated program, it's twenty-four seven. So it's, you know, the moment they get booked in, you give Justice Point a call, say, hey, I have one in the queue. You know, once you get to the point of the booking process to where they get their phone calls, one of the phone calls just goes to Justice Point. And the booking officer talks to them first, verifies the information of who they're with, the charges, things all that nature, hand the phone over. And that's when they go through their questions. And then Justice Point does their verifications. For instance, one of them's employment, they, you know, they will actually call their employer, obviously not saying, hey, you know, John's in jail, you know, they're not gonna say that. They're mostly saying like, can you confirm employment, yes or no? You know, so we're not just taking, you know, the defendant's word for it. These things are all being verified, including the background investigation, which is huge, which is actually, they're gonna have lean access, uh, which means nationally. We'll know, you know, if these, obviously we're really close to Wisconsin, it's big to know, it's good to know like what's happened, if they've had a criminal history in Wisconsin and, you know, Minnesota. Making sure that we have a really solid risk assessment to give to a judge, to give to a magistrate, to where it's, you know, it's, it's solidified.
Say this about, uh, Wisconsin.
What's that?
You said it's out of Wisconsin?
The company is, yeah, Justice Point, the one we set, the, 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 the company we subcontract, subcontract through is Justice Point and they're from Wisconsin.
So you're saying none, nobody in Michigan has a?
We, no, they, we do. However, Justice Point, actually as, as it stands right now, Market County does their own, personally, myself, every morning, Monday through Friday. And the biggest thing is that the, we're, we're missing the weekends. Uh, you know, I'm only a two-person department. Uh, this is kind of where we get into like the rural aspect of it, of it's actually beneficial for, you know, these, uh, more rural communities to utilize a program, uh, you know, a company like Justice Point. Like if you go to Oakland County, they're huge. Oakland County is a Mecca of Community Corrections. And believe it or not, they, uh, the amount of dollars they get from their grant, they, I believe their, they, their general fund, they, times three. You know, they're huge, they're really the, the Mecca of Community Corrections. They have their own department, you know, for risk assessments, they pull their own lean. They have multiple people just doing interviews in their jails. However, they are, you know, I can't even tell you how many times the size of Marquette even. Uh, so that's why Justice Point is essential in order to reach, you know, rural community, communities, because, you know, I don't, it's the booking.
They don't have one of those in Michigan, a Michigan based.
No, no, they don't. Just, just Justice Point is the only one that we have found in Michigan and the state has, yeah, the state has.
They're in Wisconsin, you said.
Correct, but, um, um, yeah, the state has actually been the ones kind of helping us. Like they're the ones been searching for this and Justice Point has been the one that they have found to be viable. Um, and.
I just don't like bringing, I don't like taking Eldred County money and putting it into Marquette. I don't like taking Michigan money and giving it to, you know, what we should be looking at in-house.
Unfortunately, there's just no options, although I definitely would be, trust me. I'm all about trying to keep things local as much as we can. However, Justice Point is really the only. However, Justice Point is really the only option for that. Um, however, I believe that they are willing to open up a branch here eventually, if we eventually do get to the size that we potentially could. What's that? Uh, it could be anywhere in the, it could be in Marquette, it could be anywhere, you know.
They have their office anywhere in the U P.
Correct. And, and honestly, they really don't need to. They, this, this is all, this isn't done physical, you know, like, you know, like interview, kind of like what we are, it's just a phone call. It's all it is, and the background investigations can take place elsewhere.
Wow, this, a lot, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Billy, you got anything on that? You're seeing that in our Justice Department.
Um, so, uh, just for you guys, uh, my name's Lilian Farman, I'm the chief public defender here. And, um, unfortunately, our office has been out of all of those conversations. And I think that, um, yeah, I, I really think we wish we could have been part of this beginning. Um, we absolutely have been wanting TRICAP here, that's. I have many concerns about the, the risk assessment. I want people to talk to clients as little as possible. Um, when knowing that they could self-incriminate. Um, and so my concern about any risk assessments, they're, they're not attorneys, there's no attorney-client privilege attached there. Um, and certainly that's public, right, in, in this, yeah, so that's, that's my concern. Um, but I would love to give my information to you if you're able, we would love to have that conversation. Um, if the board is willing to table for now before making a decision.
This is still, this is still a part of the beginning phase and, and a hundred percent, I welcome any department, whether it be public defenders, prosecutors. Um, and any person, you know, that is going to be connected to Eldra County, I, I would love to chat with, so.
And I have many questions about costs and direct costs that would impact my clients, all of them are indigent and, yeah.
Yeah, nothing, nothing. There's no cost to a client, that's a big thing for me, is making sure that, that, you know, as you know, it's, it's very wrong for someone's on pre-trial. Especially pre-trial to be paying for electronic monitoring, like a tether, something like that. There's no cost to the client. We are all about, you know, least restricted moods, there are bond and bail reviews. Um, as we, as we go forward in the process, every forty-five days. Someone's got a tether on, we want to make sure the judge knows how well they're doing or, or, or maybe they're not, you know, maybe extend them to ninety days. We're all about trying to ship down that ladder if they're doing well, you know, there's no sense in keeping someone in jail or on a tether that doesn't.
Thank you.
Oh, when they, uh, come out of TRICAP, under fifty days, do you have any, uh, uh, information on? Repeat, if they repeat, repeat what they've been doing?
Yeah, recidivism, yeah, ab- absolutely, yeah. Their, their recidivism rate is around sixty percent, I do believe. That means sixty percent of the people that leave TRICAP do not go back within the system. They do track, correct. But, it's, it's very, it's pretty high, honestly. Um, especially when you're talking about the people that are going down there. So, it, it's, it's a great, the night, I think the biggest thing that TRICAP does is where the rubber meets the road. You know, once you're done with treatment, it's not over. They have a whole aftercare plan, you know, they're supplying people with. You know, cell phones, making sure they have, you know, a place to reside, whether that be, you know, uh, some sort of sober living or something along that nature. Uh, they really do an, a phenomenal job of that as well.
How long have you just been tracking this?
This for, TRICAP has been around since, uh, the, I believe the early, early two thousands, if I'm not mistaken. However, locally here, uh, we've been tracking it for, you know, going on our second year, so it's still kind of new to us in Marquette. Yeah.
But you do have, back a long ways, eh?
TRICAP, nineteen ninety, there you go. Yeah, they've been around for a long time, I know. Uh, it was kind of, it was kind of frustrating when, uh, I, I was very new to this job when I learned about TRICAP and. Realizing that we could have been utilizing these services for, uh, we actually started Community Corrections in Marquette in twenty nineteen, so it's kind of been going on for a while. Obviously COVID happened, but I wish we would have known about it sooner. So, that's why I, sometimes I kind of joke around, feeling like I'm. I'm a, I'm like a, you know, traveling pastor, preacher, but I just, you know, like truly, this is, this is remarkable stuff and, um, my whole goal is really just to. Spread the word and try to get everyone on the same page and on board.
I think you need to sit down and start figuring with the, all the departments involved. The defense, prosecution, sheriff's department, courts. And.
I'd welcome it.
Well, those are the people you need to convince and they need to come up with that it's viable and then they'll come to us with.
Sure, sounds, sounds great to me.
Those are the folks that need to, we, I appreciate all the information, so we've got to add some. We kind of know what's going on ahead of time, but yeah, you need to drill down with those folks and. They're, they're the ones that are going to have some really specific questions and concerns and stuff.
Absolutely, for sure.
Any else have questions? You have a question, Mike, or?
Nope.
Good, thank you for your time, Matt.
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name's Matt Mastert, um, CEO of Pathways Community Mental Health, and I really appreciate your, your time and allowing me to come to, to address the county commission today. Um, in the past, uh, we've, uh, Pathways has submitted a, a programming and planning guidelines. Um, to the county commissions, um, this is something that, that we, it's part of our, our, our feedback to the county commissions. Um, it's part of our mental health code that went into effect nineteen, nineteen seventy-four. Um, unfortunately, that the programming and planning guidelines, um, are, are, are pretty dull, so. Um, and when I took over the CEO role in twenty-two, uh, it was one of my, my big things was to, to change that. And to be able to be, be in person with you and be able to kind of give you the color commentary, so to speak, of what's going on within the C M H world. Um, that would be an improvement of the, of that planning guidelines, so. Um, I'm going to kind of, uh, try to be brief, but I'm going to go over just a little bit of, uh, history and where we are at, uh, with things and then kind of blend into. Um, kind of the, some of the stats, but how we've, wh- what we're doing is how we're serving and success stories and then challenges, so. The, the first slide there is the, the Pathways overview, the, the Pathways mission statement is we serve and empower people with severe mental illness. Severe emotional disturbances or developmental disabilities to enhance their quality of life. So, really, the, there's kind of two parts of that, that is, are kind of critical, it's. Um, serving and empowering and to enhance their quality of life, it's a recovery-oriented. This is. With this, uh, and, and I'll, I'll get into a little bit of the compare and contrast to a non-recovery-oriented. Um, model that was, that was started out, um, when, when Michigan became a state, but. We are really recovery-oriented, oriented and then we serve three primary populations. That's, uh, those adults with severe, uh, severe mental illness, um, children with, with severe emotional disturbances. And adults and children with, uh, developmental disabilities. So, a fourth kind of group that we do serve is those that would be, um, that would have, uh, substance abuse. But the, that's, that's would be only if you had a primary diagnosis of one of the other ones. So, we're talking severe, um, schizophrenia, severe depression, um, childhood trauma, uh, severe is the kind of the key. Key part of that whole piece of the puzzle. Um, if, uh, the, the, the example I like to, to throw out on a regular basis is. If a child comes in, an adolescent comes in, broke up with her girlfriend and said, hey, look, I, I'm really depressed, I, I really would like some services. The, the access or the eligibility screening would, would go, well, how long is, have, have you been depressed? Well, a couple of weeks. And, um, that, that would, would mean it's not severe and it's not persistent. And they would be referred out to a community partner, so. Uh, we are, a- again, back to, back to the severe, uh, uh, the deep end of the pool, as, as I, as I like to refer to it, so. The, um, i- it's, it's really, uh, it's, it's a, an important piece of the puzzle and because of that. We are, are required to serve those that come door to door, we're the, the, the safety net, um, of, of sorts for the, the community mental health world. Uh, we can't turn anybody away, we have to serve and, uh, which makes it for a challenging, um, to say the least, so. If you flip the page to kind of the, the Michigan map there of, of the color, kind of the color coding. You see that pathways in, in our counties are, are in brown there. Um, Eldra County and Marquette County merged, uh, this is the, where, since we're a county funded and, and operating system. The, um, the counties were, were pa- handed the, the responsibility in nineteen sixty-three for the Community Mental Health Act. Um, that, that passed on, uh, the, the responsibility from, from de-institutionalization, which I'll get into in a minute. Over into the counties, uh, in, 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 uh, Michigan handed off the responsibility. So each county back in the sixties. Had their own community mental health, um, uh, system. That is obviously, it's, uh, it's kind of hard to, hard to manage for, uh, for a county of this size. And there was mergers that happened, nineteen sixty-eight, Eldra-Marquette merged. Um, nineteen ninety-seven was Loose County, uh, joined the affiliation and then in nineteen ninety-eight. I was thankful to witness, um, how, when Delta County became part of, of, uh, of Pathways and became the four county agency we have today. You see that there, there's, uh, there's, uh, today, as we said, we, there's, uh, uh, forty-six community mental health scattered around Michigan. Um, it's, uh, uh, here in the U P, there are, are a total of five. And, um. It's, uh, uh, right around three hundred, uh, uh, right around, um. Uh, a, about a hundred million dollar budget, um, for the entire U P. That gets just, just gets distributed out and I'll kind of go into that in a minute, but. Um, where we kind of, we started with this back, um, in Michigan, Michigan became, Michigan became a state, the first constitution, uh, covered. The, um, the, 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 um. Caring for individuals where that were quote, uh, deaf, dumb, blind and insane. Um, that was, uh, in like that back in those times and late eighteen hundreds, early eighteen hundreds. It was, um, institutions where, where the kind of the, the progressive thing to do, take somebody and move them into the state hospitals. Um, at its peak, we had sixteen state hospitals in Michigan, the closest one was, um, what it was originally called was the Upper Peninsula Asylum for the Insane. That's the Newbury State Hospital. So, that's, that, uh, got, uh, um, established in eighteen ninety-five. And, um, due to overcrowding, lack of choice, um, it really became a major problem in the early nineteen hundreds. With, um, uh, the, 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 again, the overcrowding, if you get a chance to check out, uh, Willa, well, there's a, a, a YouTube video called, um. Uh, Willa, Willa Brook State Hospital. Uh, and it's the, um, it's a, a, a expose from Geraldo Rivera. Still, and he's a lot younger than, than what he is now, but he's still had the mustache back in the day. But, um, he did a, a expose of, of how the, the conditions were in Willa Brook State Hospital in, um, New York State. Um, R F K Senior, uh, called it a snake pit when he did a tour. Um, it was a really sad case, individual, kid, children running around with no clothes on, no education. Uh, fifty or a hundred to one, um, staff to client ratio, really, really sad, um, case of, uh, state of affairs. Um, in Willa Brook. And that's what basically across the state, what was going on is over, overcrowding and, uh, lack of choice, so. That led to some changes within the, um, the, in the sixties and into the seventies for. Um, first establishing the community-based, uh, community mental health world. And then, uh, further refining it. Michigan Mental Health Code in nineteen seventy-four. Really brought about like, okay, how are we going to do this whole community thing? And that's what led to, um, outlines of, of how the counties are, are their responsibilities. The appointing and creating of mental health, um, uh, uh, agencies. And dissolving, so there, you, you control that ability at the county. Um, the appointing and, and, uh, removing individuals from the board. Commissioner Capagrosa is obviously on our board and I thank you for your service. Um, and, uh, it, there's, there's other parts and pieces that kind of went to, in, into establishment of, of, uh, how the community mental health were, were established. But, it, what it really did is it moved. Um, it moved individuals out of, of the, uh, of, of the institutions and into, um, into the, uh. Into the community mental health world. Right now, Michigan serves three hundred and fifty thousand individuals in the community and rather than in, in the institutions. And, um, that's, uh, right now, we can serve right around thirty-seven more, it's thirty-seven times more individuals in the community than, than we can in, in, in the, um. Uh, in the institution era of things. So they were really expensive. No overcrowded, no recovery, really some major problems in, in the community, we've got, um, a completely different. Structure that, that we focus in on recovery, so. Um, let's see, so, the first bar chart there is, uh, is, uh, um, slide four. Um, that's just the number of individuals year over year by county. Um, that, that we've seen since twenty nineteen to present. Um, it's a six percent increase every year of the individuals that we see. Um, right around the, the, our, our, um. Uh, are, are those that we've, um, uh, the, the fundings that, that we've, that we, uh, have, we get primarily from Medicaid. Um, it really is more stagnant than a six percent increase every year, that's for sure. And, um, so we do, we continue to try to do, um, more with the, with the individuals that we see.
You have to have Delta County's numbers?
Yep, next page.
I mean, for the years though, for your.
Um, I, I don't have that easily visible here, I could get that for you if you'd like, but. Um, the, the ones, the, the, on page, on slip, the fifth slide there. That's the Elder Counties as of, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, so that would be October of twenty-three through September of twenty-four. So to serve those, um. We, we do have, uh, we have about a hundred and eighty-five individuals that, that are, that serve. This, um, across all four counties. Marquette has about a hundred Escanaba, uh, and Delta County has sixty. Newbury or Loose County has, um, an office of about twenty. And then over here, uh, we've got an office just on West Superior Street that, uh, has seven. So, slides, the, uh, slide six there is our funding sources. Um, the big blue pie chunk is, uh, is, is our Medicaid funding. This is coming in, um, from the state and from the feds at, you know, right around ninety-two percent of our funding. Um, we, uh, it's capitated, so it just like the, the, um, the. The, the downside of, of having to serve, um, everybody that comes to your door, no matter what. Is, uh, the, the upside of that is at least our funding is capitated, so it's a pre-actual, uh, actuarially sound. Uh, amount of dollars that we get coming in. I don't know if I a hundred percent agree with all that all the time, there, because there's always more that we could be doing. With, uh, and having additional monies to serve, but that's what that says. The, uh, the local, you can see about fourth down on that, uh, list is six hundred thousand. Um, that's, uh, uh, contributed by, uh, appropriated, um, from the four counties. Eldra has, uh, thirty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty, twenty dollars. That's appropriated to the, the C M H on a yearly basis. That number was locked and at nineteen ninety-eight, so that number has, has states, sa- stayed, uh, um, right along at that number since, uh, ninety-eight. So. There's a really nice, uh, I'll point out that. The, uh, the local and the general fund, um, dollars are kind of tied together. Every time I use a general dollar, ninety percent, ninety cents of it is general. General fund dollars and ten percent is local. So it's really important to make sure that I've got enough local to be able to use my, my, my general fund. I run out of local, I can't use general fund. And, uh, things get. Kind of dicey and I gotta come talk to you guys, so, I don't, and I'd rather not talk to you both.
I think with a fifty-five million dollar budget, you should be able to find thirty-three thousand. You shouldn't have to pay more than thirty-three thousand.
Yeah, and I don't, I'm not asking for that, so. The, um, but yeah, the, it's, it's really is about the, the. What we can spend the money on is the biggest piece of the puzzle. Um, for a great example, pens. Pens for job fairs, I go out and I've tried to recruit individuals, we need X number of individuals, uh, uh, sta- staff here in Eldra County for. Whatever, uh, admin clinical services, I need to go to a job fair. I want to have the skirts for the tables, I want to have pens, I want to give giveaway stuff to try to get people to come up to my table. That of the forty-seven million dollars or the four million dollars, that's, that's, that's underneath there. That's for services and I cannot use that, that doesn't allocate it for it. The only thing I can use is that, that is part of that, um, six hundred thousand dollars. So, that's where it gets kind of dicey on, on to how I can use money, um, and, uh, and it's kind of split it up that way, if that makes sense. Over on the operating expenses. Con- contract residential, um, is forty-two percent of our, our current, uh, expenses. Um, that's equates to a hundred and forty, a hundred and seventy-seven individuals. So, we've got, um, the individuals that need twenty-four seven care, um, a hundred and forty-four of those are in the U P. And due to, to, uh, supply of, of providers. And, or, and or, uh, behavioral needs or needs of the individuals, we have thirty-three that are downstate. Slide eight, I guess, is just to start recruiting, we've, we've started to rebound, um, from the. The number you see there is, you know, we want to open positions at the end of the calendar year. It goes up and down, of course, through the calendar year, just like it would here in the county. Um, but we've started to, to have a rebound of, uh, positions that are. Are vacant at the end of the year. Um, we continue to advocate and, and try to, to, uh, um, move forward with retention. Now, what's, what's kind of, uh, interesting on that is, um, back in twenty fifteen. Um, the average clinical team. Um, the average clinical team, the years of service with, which, within our, our full clinical team was uh, six point eight years, so we had an average of six point eight years. Of everybody on the team. Um, due to um, some changes from COVID, due to changes for the, the, the governor. Continuing to advocate for school-based mental health services. The individuals have left our service to go over to work in the schools. And we had a huge turnover, that's where some of the recruiting spikes have been there. And our, our um, our, our, at present. The um, the years of, of knowledge or service within our, our system. Is dropped to three point eight, so it's a drop of forty-five percent of the amount of average years of service that, that people have, so. If we take the supervisors out of the case, um, the average clinician is, has about a year, year and a half worth of experience, which. Is uh, extremely troubling for, for a system as complicated as, as Michigan's mental health system is. I'll wrap this up with just a, a couple of uh, success stories, we got a three-year accreditation from CARP, is the Commission on Accreditation and Rehabilitation Services. Were required to be accredited every year, um, and maintain our accredit, accreditation. Um, and uh, we had, uh, for many years in a row, we've gotten three-year accreditation, we got it back in May. The Bell Seal Award, I'm very proud of, it's, it's workplace mental health, so this is our, our inter- internal culture. And uh, we awarded a, a platinum seal, an upgrade from gold to platinum this year for. Support and for our staff um, to be able to serve. Um, I was, uh, once upon a time, I was uh, in a meeting with a, a clinician who had been out providing services through the day. And I asked her, I turned to her and asked her a question and she just blank faced uh, at me and I, I. And finally spoke up and said, Matt, I, I'm sorry, I, 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 I can't let go of the, the case I just got done with where the, the parents had locked. Their, their kid, their child in a, in a dog cage. On a regular basis, and so that's the kind of secondary traumatic stress that. That the staff are dealing with, and we're trying to create a culture that's supportive and caring internally, and that platinum seal is a good indicator of that. The uh. I, I know I'm probably way over on time, but uh, I, I really wanted to point out one more piece that I, I were really proud of. The Behavioral Health Home um, is, is a program that uh, it's. It, it's physical health and mental health combined, mental health uh, is historically been, you know, neck up is kind of the, the way it's been. Described and physical health is neck down and the two kind of don't talk to each other, the two halves. Um, mental health is really branching into more, trying to, to work on the physical health, because if you, if you've got your. Um, uh, your, your diabetes under control and you've got your uh, you know, uh, it, it body stuff is, uh, taken care of. You're going to be that much more mentally prepared or mentally okay. So we've got, uh, we've had some huge success with our behavioral health um, integration, which links up um, primary care and um, mental health care. And um, we've, we've uh, there's one shining example that was used at a state level as an example, a success story where an individual had lost. Um, that, that was uh, in, in the legal system incarcerated, in and out of jails, um, had uh, di- uncontrolled diabetes. And was in, at risk of losing his feet, um, we went ahead and um, uh, we, this individual in services. Then uh, it, it, it came out, um, had lost thirty-some pounds, diabetes under control. And uh, went ahead and was not at risk of losing his feet anymore, so. It's a great program, evidence-based program that the state has stand up with us and we're happy to have it, so. Federal funding is a big one, um, with the changes from the fed, federal level. Um, that, that are, are coming down the pike, um, I, I'm not sure what that means for, for Michigan's mental health system. Um, there may be uh, avenues for advocacy that, that I'll bring to your attention, um, if and when that, that, that time comes. And um, to try to maintain uh, the, the, the services for those that are desperate need of it here in, in, in Michigan, so. Um, that's the, the uh, there, there's been talk of everything from federal match changes to block grants to. Um, uh, all, all kinds of different options that we don't know what, what that's going to mean yet. But uh, we're, we're continuing to advocate and uh, there's always, there's great help from our Michigan Association of Sheriffs. Michigan Association of Community Mental Health, as well as the Michigan Associate, Association of Counties. Is uh, great advocates to try to keep this afloat, so. Beyond that, um, just contract, continue to try to, to move forward, so. With your help, we really appreciate it, and I left some contact information on the back, and uh, by all means, if there's anything that you would like. Further information, I'd be love to, love to have, help you.
Michelle, too, I just got to get logged in again.
Well, they have years.
Yeah, okay.
Plus big periods, and what's difference from what you were doing last year?
This one is just spelling it out um, in a different format, so um, the county. Um, is looking at subordination, but um, only if there is a better. Um, timeframe and a better interest rate. Um, and then the county would look at subordinating for um, the lien.
And only ninety percent.
Well, this is different, uh, what I'm spelling out is that I'm not a lender. And um, this would be looking at the title work. Um, that the bank's going to provide, and if the bank is willing to do a new mortgage with the client. Then we would take the bank's, the lender's information and then ask the county to subordinate. With no cash out.
I don't like that idea. That's gonna somebody be right again, right?
The lien re- remains on the home. Um, currently, if there is um, a lien out for the home improvement program, the county's in a second position. And the county would remain in a second position.
Well, we don't want somebody to take a loan off for more than ninety percent of what that house is valued for. If we're in second position, it needs to be what they owe us, plus. What they want to borrow can only be ninety percent of what the house should value at. If that's not that, that's not a smart move on that.
Many of your clients that just came in, uh, like for seniors. Um, in this, we're going back years, so it's not um, any new, um, they're not going to be able to do that. Um, to pay off the lien, if they're looking at um, subordinating for a better interest rate. And then again. So you have a number of um, older liens, okay? So um, a number, number of them are seniors, so if there's still a mortgage on the home, they're not going to be able to. Look at rolling into this lien, because that's a, in some cases, an extra twenty-five thousand dollars. And depending on where their income's coming from. So having the straightforward of what Mista provides as a subordination. Then that's a clear cut that the county will not look at any hardships or having cash out to the client.
We don't look at hardships, no, do we? Knows the whole thing, we don't want to guard you.
In my third position.
And no third position, we don't want to let somebody go and borrow. You know, because the bank's going to say first, their first online, they're going to say, oh, you got a hundred thousand dollar house here, you want to, you want to borrow ninety thousand, sure. Well, we got a twenty thousand dollar second lien, they don't care, so when, when it's all said and done, we ain't going to get paid. That's not a good, that's not fair to us, it's not fair to taxpayers. So, it's got to be to whatever they owe the county, plus whatever. Their loan is, I know the banks ain't going to loan over nine percent, so you take those two, and if it's hundred ninety percent, it's fine. If they want to straight forward.
And the county's directed me on how you would like it.
Right, that's, I don't know, I thought that's all we had before, was if it was over ninety percent.
Well, we need a policy so that we can provide that to the lenders too.
Didn't we have, I thought we went over this already once, so.
Yeah, well, that wasn't a formal policy, we agreed on committee, or did it come to?
And that, what does that say, how is that interpreted?
Not to exceed ninety, I think.
That's what I thought, I didn't, and I thought we had it in policy, that's the thirds.
Right, because they come to us on top of whatever they've got. So using your hundred thousand dollar house, if I get ninety dollars from the bank and then come to the county for another twenty, now I'm at a hundred and ten.
Right, yes, yeah.
Which isn't good for the county.
No, because we're second.
No matter what happens, whether the house property gets sold or whatever, then. If it's only worth a hundred. There's no way we're ever going to recover. The money so we can loan that to somebody else, oh, yeah, I, I see what you're saying, I think that needs to be part of it, that.
That's what we have right now. That's been voted on in terms of our policy. So I didn't know what was the. You don't want.
Okay, what I would suggest, my recommendation, um, just so that um, there's no influence on if you were going to subordinate. And we'll follow the um, policy that is existing, is that um, we're just providing the information straight up. And you're not going to know the client's name.
That's fine, I thought that's what we did last time, just to get rid of that, so we didn't have to, it wasn't nothing personal, we're going to set this as ninety percent. We don't care if it's, but you can only borrow up nine percent, that's us and what you're borrowing. Of the value of the home. For us to be a second lien.
Well, are you looking at them to take out equity? Because we're not talking about equity. We're looking at them to get a better interest rate and a better term for their payments. They're not getting equity out.
Okay. Well, if they're going on better terms, then it should, it should be there.
We'll only subordinate for rates and term refinancing or your property improvement, not, not for transactions will convert, which convert equity to cash.
Yeah.
Right, but you're looking at, you're only going to subordinate if it's ninety percent loan to value.
Yes. I mean, why wouldn't it be? If they, they already, unless there's some out there that was done before this and we made a decision that's, that wasn't smart.
Yeah, literally the last, the second last paragraph. Of our policy currently states that in both of the above situations, the combined amount of all liens must not exceed ninety percent true cash back.
Right, if they're getting better, there should be no reason why there is over ninety percent, value in Eldra County has been going up. From how many years, there's, there's no reason that there should be less than ninety.
There's law for us to go over it, but it would have to be by a vote of the county board on each individual loan at that point, go more than ninety percent total.
And I think that would be something to where if their house were null, they didn't have insurance, it'd have to come back to us, right? You know, there's, there's, it doesn't matter what you say, there's going to be accepted in some law at some point.
Any new home improvement um, loans that do go out, we do have the insurance company. Provide um, an interest um, notification that comes to our office, so that we know that they still have.
Have a loan on something, you have to have insurance on it, so. The bank's going to want that also.
Okay, so my question is.
Yes.
Okay, so that we have um. The same information um, that we're going to give to any client or any lender that is coming through. We're just going to provide the um, current policy, okay?
That's, I would suggest, that, that's, I think we.
And they're going to show, the lender's going to show the ninety to ninety percent loan to value, okay?
Right. For lending, I mean, we can't, we can't be. We got to protect the county's money, and by letting somebody, they come up there and they want to borrow ninety percent. But they already owe us twenty-five percent, that's just. That's not good stewards of the money. You know, the bank would never do it, so, and if the bank wants to be second, and us first, they go a while.
That would be nice, that would be nice.
That's, I don't, in there, if we want to put. If it is over, we will out over ninety percent if we are first insured, for purchase. On the note.
Yeah, that's never.
And you know darn well, the man will never do that, so that's.
They have to protect their.
Right. Their, their investors and their money, so. Yeah, I think that's usually what they're at about ninety percent, they're not going to want to owe anything more than ninety percent of the value of the home.
Not anymore.
The language you were talking about, that going forward should be unknown to the board.
That, the individual on that is applying. Or requesting us to ordinate. Someone will be knowing who the individual is, okay, but um, when collecting the information and. Having the chair sign the subordination, um, all that background, um, information would be going to.
We're transparent, this is county's money, county, if you're, if you're asking county for money, you better tell us who we are. That's, I'm sorry, that's where I'm at, why should it, why should be hiding? Was there to hide?
Well, you can make a decision um, based on the individual.
Well, you need a decision, it's on board policy, over ninety percent, no, I guess.
That is up to the board.
Policy, right. Right, it's outside of policy, then it's going to have to be a separate vote and separate issue, but.
I think while it's policy, it doesn't have to come in the board for a vote, it's in policy, right?
Yeah, we have to put it back through administrative, we, we did.
If it, as it stands, as long as it fits within our policy, it doesn't.
We have a policy, if somebody comes up for one of these and they made all the criteria, it doesn't have to come to our board to vote on it. It's automatically through, isn't it?
Well, it's going to be changing the mortgage. We're up old in the mortgage right now.
Yeah, the board has to vote each time, still.
Then it's up to the board, I mean, that is.
Yeah, anything outside of policy, then require a vote, but anything that's within the policy should be.
Should be policy.
How does those connect then, Michelle? Well, it would just, um. With all the details. Yep, that would never change. Right, so when the board. When the board subordinates, they're just saying they're still going to take that um, position behind the lender. And that's a signed document? Mm-hmm, and it's recorded.
That's why I have a title search on everything.
But it has to be approved and signed.
It should, would it be approved if the board is um, approving an individual? To um, sign on behalf of the board, or if you want to. If someone with authority has to sign the um.
Board policy, and I think that's why we did this before, so when it was supposed to streamline things.
So we don't have to, have to review every single one that comes through, as long as it falls within the policy, and that's why we spent the effort.
Right, to change this.
So what were the questions in the committee, I, I can't remember. Do you have those in front of you?
No, it was mostly the difference between the.
Okay.
Policy versus existing, and why would we take out? The ninety percent true cash, right, they're definitely the third subordination agreement, where they're created, added it on the board, and then. That. Secrecy or that element taking me out of the boards, the knowledge of who the person is. Which would still be the case, because it would go through the treasurer, you say if they're approved, and then. There's no vote required, or the treasurer decides.
Like, those steps will have to be outlined, so that um. If I'm no longer in my position, the other person would know what those steps are.
But that's an internal, that's not, that's not this board, this.
Well. That is what we're going to add on there too, because you're going to say, where does um, the documents go? So we're the third-party administrator, our agency, and then who do we give the documents to, it's just. Steps that you can add to that policy.
Okay, so we would have to change the policy to, to specify.
Yeah, I would change the policy to add these steps, so when you're subordinating and when you're paying off. Sorry, so um, it's the bottom part of the draft.
You see that?
I don't think, do you have the draft in front of you? Okay, yeah, just the process, yeah.
This, this looks exactly like what we're just talking, as long as it falls within our policy.
Because they added, adding both of those to the.
It can be signed off. The way I look at this all. Lands on Pam's lap, and you go, I want her to make, to give the recognition, she thinks on this. And you go on her to make, to give the recognition, she sees things on this, would make sure.
And so far, that's what our office has been doing. After the decisions have made. What we are agreeing to.
Yes, we just add that to our existing policy.
Yes, yeah, just so that it spills out, and then we can give that to the lenders.
We'll do it at the next meeting. Administrative meeting. Or.
For next month's cycle.
We do not have anybody in line right now.
Whatever you wanna work on.
Yeah, then we can follow our old board.
Okay.
Number nine, except Christine's resignation, appoint Bryce Burke to the Eldred County. Multi-county material management committee. We tie that read in, oh no.
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 He represents the city, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And number ten, appoint Mickey to replace Kelly. Same board.
This is not forever, is it?
No.
No, but Kelly's ready to take it back. Redo it.
Number eleven, material management plan, work plan, budget year one. He wants to throw a bunch of numbers at things. Joel's getting a raise. That's under yours, says your name, seven grand.
It's our administrator, yeah, he's our administrator.
Add the trial.
Yeah, add goes in the budget.
Yeah, I did those.
Any questions? Consensus?
Yeah.
Number twelve. Jamie Edible, and she's not even here.
So. Um, I was hoping you could. Just discuss it a little bit.
Okay, has everybody read the letter from Jamie? Yeah, yeah, we, I, my personal thought is, you know, we, she's a non-union anyway. We have every year, we discuss their wage once a year. Last year, she was all fine, she didn't want money, she wanted more time off. We agreed on that, we gave her more time off, more of this. We do that once a year, so our budget, we can budget for the year, that's why we do it in October. My feeling is, we don't open up contracts the middle of the season, doesn't matter if it's personal or. One person or the whole union, um.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention, we'll talk about it in October.
Exactly, so I told her, that's my thought, but I said we will bring this to a board, this is a board decision. I mean, everybody has their chance to bring this stuff to the board, so.
But not out of the question. But not out of the question, I think is what.
Out of the question?
Not out of the question.
Booking the budgets and wages.
I think it's unreasonable.
For the moment.
Yeah.
Definitely, we want to look at it when it comes to stay. September, October again.
Do we wanna bring this?
Why?
Do you want her here next week?
Doesn't like your smashed finger.
Revisit it, committees. Push it off the buttons.
No, I got period, touching it every.
Oh, yeah, we know.
So I was trying to get you back to your window.
What's she asking? I thought she'd be here to ask, which, this is what she wants?
She's asking to match the same as Scott Sally?
She's not the same position as Scott.
Or is she asking? Didn't she mention that she has? A lot less than like the average of other quarter quarters or whatever.
And it's hard, it's a really hard thing to quantify.
Scott Smith's position was open a year and a half ago. She didn't go for it, she rather stayed where she's at than go for that one, that one paid more money. I don't know their jobs, you know, we don't have. They're superior here. To know that, so. And I don't wanna bring up.
Mid-cycle.
Mid-cycle contract.
I, I agree it's a contract. Whether it's a, with a union or with our non-union folks. The time for that is come fall.
Right.
So, yeah, I would, I would think we need to, you know, if she wants to look at this in the fall with us.
But that's, there's a lot to look into this, we don't just open up that, this is tons of work to open every, you're opening everything up, because that's what she's saying, is she. List everybody's stuff, so we gotta look at everything. And we do that once a year.
I think that's the time to look at it.
So do I. But I think she's a good employee.
No doubt there.
And that's why we gave her what we did last time, we gave her her last, it was like, yes, everybody, we tried to give her, they asked. That we did. But we don't. Start going mid string here.
The time to ask.
No. And then to say. You know, she'll have to re, would she, what was her words? Rethink her positioning there or something, give her time to rethink her position there, so, well, I'm sorry. That's how you think of us, and I guess. The budget.
I think that's the fair time myself. And.
Our heads are gonna get over there then?
Well, that's the time, that's the time, that's the time that we look at that stuff, that's the time we do it, we've settled it for this, we've already set this here.
Yes, we have.
So, it's just like any. Any other request from a department head that's not in the budget already. You know, it's an emergency situation.
Do I have consensus?
To push it to budget time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, that was, um, number thirteen, veterans. We ran some metric stuff.
Imagine that, we start cutting holes in block walls. Moving radiators.
And making them.
That's not bad.
No, like take that out of buildings and grounds. Capital improvement. He paid him most of it, this was above and beyond, that was not.
This is extra they found.
Capital improvement.
Looks good up there.
The consensus on A and B then, take that with capital improvement? Number fourteen, authorize EMS. Auction up two thousand nine four, four fifty, three number, anyway. Four eight six, so, money's going to Amway.
Were we able to? Solve the title issue?
Yeah. As there's no title?
As a no title.
Can we legally sell it with no title?
No, you're just, you would be off, once that is done.
Once they've, once they've done the title, okay, I'm just making sure.
Anything in here for both titles, so I would make say, uh, consensus to auction, um. Once titled. Consensus?
When are you gonna put it up?
Soon as the title.
Leave it up.
Are they gonna put it as we won, Wisconsin?
It's an auction service instead of.
We have a policy for it, yeah.
I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Don't they take the box off?
No, whole thing, whole thing, the awesome deer blind, put that right up in the middle of your field.
We just, okay.
Number fifteen, committee list update. Everybody get that?
Well, there is, yep, I just missed it.
MSU was the only one that took the liberty.
Yeah. Thanks.
We've, we volunteered, Jeff.
You weren't here.
You're talking about me at the same time.
We did, we used the highly technical method of not it.
Any questions on that committee listing?
The only thing I have is, I'm gonna be in Florida on the twentieth, or that materials management. I haven't heard anything from them, so.
Right, we did, we did, they offer a Zoom option, Kelly?
Yeah.
So if you, if you want, you can always take your.
Oh, yeah.
Laptop and at least listen in, I hate trying to talk on Zoom, because I always feel like there's too much of a delay, but.
I do a lot, that with, uh, U P State Fair.
Yeah, to listen in?
Yeah.
Anything else?
I can do that, eh? But they do have a website for that.
They have a Zoom. Bryce Bird would tell you everything.
The only thing I got on the committee list is we need to make sure that these entities. Know who's on, because I think that's how we were missing some of these, is they get to know which one of us they were supposed to be contacting.
So they didn't contact anybody.
The prison contacted me directly asking, so I answered that one.
Cause I was on prison. But I think that we chose not to, because my husband works.
And I'm pretty, well, and I'm pretty sure that they were sending the email you should have been getting to prior to you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cappy or?
No, because we had them, no, I wasn't, but they came to one of our meetings with the sheriff and everybody and talked to me. And then I just never received anything, so.
Their email list was way old.
So they just never updated it after visiting us here.
They couldn't figure out why he didn't come for the last meeting, which was last week. And I corrected them on, and I sent it to your guys' emails, because they had no clue.
Even though they sat right here two years ago and took all my information. I don't remember who it was, it was one of the, when the sheriff, everybody, they all.
It was the same thing with Michigan Works. For a year and a half, I get nothing on a meeting, we send in the paper with my name to them, and all of a sudden, oh bang, yeah, we got this, now we got another one in May, so. We, we just need to make sure that these folks all know. So we get the information.
What cost? Committee list update.
What's wrong?
You're gonna be on the Department of Health and Human Services now?
Until.
That one I said that I would keep, because it's just. Yeah, remember I said.
Beautiful.
Cause I'm already in town on Thursdays for my son's playgroup and other things, and it's only a ten minute with the ladies.
Good, thank you.
Sounds like the road commission.
That is the one that I said I, that one don't.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Yes, I said that's a, it literally takes ten minutes. They just come down from DHS and give us a review of what they've gone through in the last month, any updates, and then. Those ladies were just public comment on that.
Consent of the correction, okay, unfinished business, do we have any? Financial matters. Board bills. Me and somebody went through that.
Your signatures.
Consensus on that? A, the financial reports. Good consensus on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Authorized clerk transfer between twenty twenty four fund balance to twenty eight hundred dollars. See sheet. Questions? Consensus?
Yep.
And the authorized treasurer to put back in general funds received for twenty twenty five. That was paid for twenty four expenses, a month of a hundred thirty, a hundred forty three thousand three hundred, uh, cents. Questions?
Nope.
Census?
Yep.
Yes, in resolutions? Committee reports?
The Michigan Works, I went to their first one, so that was. A lot of good information, uh. They are pegging their belts down, they're not sure, some of their funding is up in the air right now, so. They're kinda. They're making some contingency plans so that if they lose funding, how they're gonna be able to continue.
I said, bring that up at the last meeting, and I was on it, I said, oh no, we're good. I said, this is before the election, I asked, and I says, you know, I think the funding's gonna start getting tight now, or you, no, we're all kind, so, okay.
Yeah, because a lot of, a lot of their funding ultimately comes from the beds, that's all. They've got, uh, they've got, they've got a good plan in place right now to. Try and draw that down and still be able to provide services, uh, most of, most of our smaller counties, the biggest thing they provide. The biggest use they see are when folks, when we want unemployment, you have to register with them. It's part of the requirements for unemployment. So, most of the smaller counties, over ninety percent of the people that they interact with, that's what they're there for. And got some alternates if they need to, to keep providing those services for folks.
Uh, well, there's health department. The one phone was, um, bring up, they don't have any. Uh, checks or balances on. Put stuff on bids. Or bring it to the board, they had a sixty five hundred dollar thing, they just gave it to somebody, they didn't even ask the boards, well, I don't have to. So that's gonna get relooked at next meeting. It's always been an open checkbook for them, uh, next meeting, we are going to make some. They're supposed to have, we're gonna.
You need to go through the policy?
Yes, make the policy, and that, they, anything over a certain amount has to go up on bids, this is government money. You know, this is money, and anything over a certain amount's gotta come up to the board, we need to know. And they just put it out there, so. That's the only thing I got.
Well, I asked them for a report on what we did right and what we did wrong, you know, in the pandemic. And they're supposed to be looking that up.
Q pad was pretty. Not really much there.
I mean.
We just, I don't even remember now.
Good as on you.
Always. And they were good.
We got our building back.
I was gonna, that was the next thing I was gonna say.
Apologize for that, that one out sooner.
The, well, animal shelter moved out of the.
Yep, they are out, we are in, um. Eric was down there today with a fellow that's got some community service hours. Uh, ceiling in the big cat room was. There was a chunk of it already missing, and the rest was ready to fall down, so they've got that. Stripped out, they had to strip off the drywall, it was full of mold and also. Not fastened properly, so. We're gonna have to get the electrician in there at some point to do some work for us and assess some things, so. Yeah. So, we have, we have work to do before we start using it. Cause then, if you're having a pass state inspection.
Oh, yeah.
So, which.
Is.
We're pretty confident that that'll go okay, but we need to, there's some correct, there's some updates.
Does he have a list of what have we done to pass that yet?
He's working on, he's had, he had a list, he's gonna, he's gonna reach out to them again to make sure they're not gonna change this stuff. Also gonna, he's gonna reach out to the lady from down in Manistee that's been helping him with a lot of stuff. And she's gonna come up, he's gonna get her up to get her, since she's around a shelter for decades. Here's what we're thinking, is, are we thinking in the right direction, are we not? Right now, it's just a prioritizing getting the things fixed that have to be fixed.
Then our trains can come.
Got some ventilation things that need to be taken care of, so. Let you know what I know as soon as I know it.
Any correspondence?
Yeah, I missed this one, I'm sorry, so Snowbell Transit Commission is looking for one of you to. Represent the counties for rail infrastructure. Improvements and expansion. Yeah.
I like her snow belt, and then I'm like railroad?
Yeah, more expansion of the rail. The rail system across.
Anybody insurance?
Yeah, so, I don't know if.
We still have quite a bit, we used to have a lot more, but.
Need to throw another outside entity. Meeting on there, is there a subset of one of your committees at that?
Anybody wanted, I don't wanna.
Commitment they looking for, I mean, they.
Meet every three months, they, you'd have to find it a little more for us to, maybe next meeting, find out.
Yeah, find out who, how often. This isn't even a.
Snowball Transit Commission.
That's off, there's a meeting on that.
Yeah.
Just how often we use it?
Yeah, just what, what are they, what kind of commitment?
Where?
How often?
Where?
Yeah.
Is it in Holden, like?
Right, you know. And what is?
You know.
We think it one.
Well, it, that two years ago, they had one, a guy out of Holden. Or Michigan Tech.
Yeah.
Bush, remember that?
Yeah, we were fiduciary for this.
They had a grant where they. Did um.
Study on the rail.
Yeah.
That's actually signed by one of Aunt Noggins.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I remember when I went to the one in Esconaba, the U P upcap.
Upcap that I went to on Friday.
There was the Aunt Noggin guy who had given us. That sheet. About wanting to sign a petition for the railway up there in Antunagin, I remember getting that.
I'll ask him about it Friday too, I see him. See. But. That's not, it's not the guy that'll be there, but the, the guy that's there.
They go about it.
A little more.
Looks like it's fairly new, yeah.
But they were working on it, so it might be the same commissioner that I met that handed me the paperwork. So.
I'll call this number if there's not the same guy, but.
Yep, but as you say, if you want to check that in, I'll check for him. Or for the man.
I was on the Mac website.
Mm-hmm.
And they're talking about taking sales tax off. Gasoline.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know how that's going to go, that's the life cycle.
But they're gonna add a different tax on it too.
Well, they're gonna get you another.
It's something to do with the road tax.
Yeah, the, the road tax can go up, but it can give you free sales tax.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably.
That's all, all they got.
I'm sure it ties back to the electric vehicles, so.
Yeah.
That's not paying gas tax for your girls. Uh. Like to thank everybody for your patience. Let's get our building back. I think we handled it. The right way.
Um, yeah.
So, I do appreciate that.
No opinion.
As, as a board, we handled it the right way, as individuals, I think we would all like to handle it differently, but the outcome has finally come through, and we now have possession of our building, and we can move forward, so.
Nobody got hurt.
Well, everything is.
Nobody got hurt.
It's nice to be driving in bare rooms.
Well, your sunbox for me.
Go online.
Joel staff comment? They won't be here next week, and we're going to a wedding, so Sherry will be. Remember to remind her.
Never doesn't say that it's recording, it's not recording.
You don't hear it recorded. Put that right on the top. In front of.
Make your special copy, Pam?
Nothing for me.
Any known search for her, Barry? Lance attorney?
I just want to follow up from earlier in this meeting with. Uh, the community corrections. I think um. I, I don't want my comments to say that it was like, I was. Um. Speaking ill of it, I, I don't think so at all, I think you could absolutely use it, but I ha, I do hesitate in some of the things that are gonna be very Elder County specific, and I do worry that. Financially, that Elder County's contribution would be subsidizing for Marquette County residents, that's my big concern. And then second concern are. We are a very unique community, and the, the needs of my clients, I would worry that they would be stuck in a formula. Um, and it would try to be a cookie cutter situation, and no case can ever fit in that, so I think there's. There's a need for pre-trial services, but something that is more close with Elder County, if there was funding available for Elder County to have its own. Rather than us just saying, well, we're close to Marquette, therefore we are Marquette.
And that's what he was saying, because that, the state came to them, like, you're the only one big enough that we can get.
Is that true, or?
Well.
So I guess we'd have to look.
I had had a conversation a couple of weeks ago with Eric about this, and actually, because he's been reaching out to Eric to be part of it. And that was one, that was one of the options originally.
Why reach out to Eric?
Because he knows him, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so I didn't want my comments to say like, oh, you know, I'm against it, I'm against the, the tracking and the, and the service, and it's not it at all, I just have some, some questions where. Um. I just want those questions answered, just for our people, our residents.
I believe, I'm right with you, I believe that we should be bringing job to Elder County. Everybody know my opinion, I don't like shipping this out to all these other counties, and they're just. Making it up us. We were getting services, but they're getting all the administrative costs, and everything goes out.
That's why I tried to make it pretty clear to them that we need to sit down with. Our departments.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you for the information, now it's time to get nuts and bolts with the people that are gonna have to deal with it.
And that's. I'd like, if you, if somebody can look, if not, I'll have to, but uh, find out if we're eligible for that same, and have our own.
What it would take to.
And I think we would be, there are other rural counties, I mean. Maybe a little larger, but with the same needs.
Right.
Um, that do qualify.
I mean, we have fostering from the same pot of gold that.
Yeah.
Get paid from there, great for Elder County, you should be able to do the same bit for that.
Right.